Starting in the 2526 school year, school boards would on an annual basis be presented with or have the chance to review the Language Access Plan. There's a set of criteria that tonight will be shared by Dr. Ladue, Associate Superintendent. The approval will happen in August, but this is just a chance to review what those requirements were and what our district's doing in response. Dr. Ladue.
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight I'm going to provide you with an overview of why we're talking about a Language Access Plan, as well as what we are doing within our district to ensure that all families have access to the information about their child's education, have the opportunity to engage in their child's learning, and really helps us lean into our belonging goal of all families feeling welcome and included. So, beginning in 2526, as Superintendent Law mentioned, all school districts will have a Language Access Plan that needs to outline information about how we will be communicating, particularly around academic outcomes, student progress, any determinations, and placement of students in any specialized programs or services, and making sure that parents know how to access the information, what's available, and what their rights are. And every two years, a school board must review that plan. So the plan will include information about interpretation, services, translation, and then language services and access related to notifications, communication, and training for staff. So, language identification is a process that's been in place in the state of Minnesota and in our schools for many years, but the way that this occurs is family or guardians, when they register, they complete a preferred language question as a part of that process, which allows us to know the family's preferred language and to provide appropriate supports for that family. Additionally, they identify, or we identify, students who are learning English. All families complete the Minnesota Language Survey during enrollment as well, and then we, as a school district, screen any potential English learners using an approved screening assessment. And then, following that, we notify families of the student's status, as well as any services that are needed and/or available to the student. Again, we've had in place for several years strong interpretation and translation services, but I'm going to quickly just highlight these for you as they'll be a part of this plan that'll be posted online. So, interpretation, we use the language line. This is more for impromptu type services. We need to get in contact with the family. We have something we need to share with them. We have access to many languages for this. Or, we also have a group of approved interpreter services, and often those are folks we would bring in for conferences. It could be for an IEP or for a special school event. As it relates to translation, we have both informal and formal tools. We use the Talking Points app. This allows our staff to notify parents in a text message format in their first language or their home language, their spoken language, that there's messages or information, or to give them a short reminder, like "field trip tomorrow," those short little messages. We also have auto translation that's available through School Messenger, through Seesaw, and through Spedforms for our top languages of Spanish, Somali, and Mandarin for the Spedforms portion. We also use Google Translate for messages when a teacher's sending an email that might be more customized, or when using the Schoology tool. The state of Minnesota has also made TransAct available, which is a service that allows many common translated messages for schools or other public officials to use. We use it often with our health offices for when you're sending things like a strep notice, because they're already translated into 26 languages. There's notices, though, for things like conferences. There's signage available that allows, if someone comes into the office, to find out do they need an interpreter, what language, those types of things. So it provides many pieces of information, they're just not customized. Additionally, we use Google Translate, and as you know, that can be used informally just for spoken language. And then, again, we have approved translation services where if we have messages, surveys, or other things that we want to be fully translated, we can contract with them for that purpose. Other language services, as it relates to notification, on the website, we do have built-in translation tools that translate automatically things on the webpage for our top 12 languages. We have had staff test it and find it to be highly accurate, as far as getting the essence of the message. We also have our district English learner page that has many resources on it for families to gain access to information in their first or home language. Starting in the 2526 school year, we'll include this information in handbooks, both student and family handbooks, as well as staff handbooks, and that's in response also to that legislation. We'll continue, though, to use our multilingual learner teachers. They're a great resource, and they often have connections with many of our families. And then finally, we will formally train all staff in person to make sure that they're aware of what services are available, how to access them, and where they can find information either for themselves or for their families. This will include both step-by-step guides, as well as video tutorials, which currently exist. You know, often, teachers, if they have a need, they'll ask about the app, for example, and you can go right on and watch the video, and it walks you right through setting it up and using it effectively. And that's an overview of our Language Access Plan.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Ms. Ladue?
Thank you for that. This is, just to clarify, this is not new legislation, is it?
The requirements to have a plan that is in handbooks and that is approved or adopted by the board was part of the 2024 legislative session. However, the tools and the resources and much of what we're doing has been in place for many years.
That was my wondering.
So I think it's streamlining it and really just wanting to show that intended support for family engagement and welcoming in inclusive schools.
So it sounds like we're already ahead of the curve again.
Yeah. We have, yeah. Most of the things in place, there'll be a couple of tweaks, but...
That's great. Thank you. Yes.
Dan.
Yeah, I agree. It seems like we're doing a really great job with being equipped to handle, like, scheduled communications and outgoing communications and things like that. The one thing where I would be a little curious or concerned is, you know, a parent who speaks a different language, and how, you know, does that language barrier prevent them from coming to a forum like this, or doing something on a more impromptu, casual basis? I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't know how to fix it, and I know our English as a Second Language population isn't huge in the district, but I just think that's something that we should be mindful of, is just knowing that that barrier might exist for folks and chipping away at it when we can.
Yeah. I think that's a good point, and I think when we're aware of, you know, interest in accessing any of our school events, whether that's with an interpreter or, you know, sign language to a language, we try to be responsive.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ladue. Next item up is update on curriculum resources.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, today we have two brief updates on curriculum resources for implementation in the fall of 2025. One, you've heard before, which is our elementary English Language Arts instruction materials. We heard a lengthy presentation. We're also going to get a brief presentation on some changes within our International Baccalaureate course aligned to the requirements from that organization. Our final meeting with Director of Instruction, Dr. Steve Ladue, and Literacy Coordinator, Alyssa...
Urbansky.
Steve. Yeah, I blended those terms, sorry. I was anticipating Dr. Ladue up here too. Dr. Steve Urbansky and Literacy Coordinator Alyssa Rutherford, welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Chair, members of the board. We really appreciate your time once again to talk about our instructional resources. This has been a long process, especially for our English Language Arts resources, but as you know, we always come before you at this time of year to share some updates as far as curriculum review resources, as well as APIB, new courses, and any other areas that we have that need to be updated. So, as Superintendent Law shared with you, today, we really are sharing kind of three main resources. The first is an update to IB, and that is just essentially an IB Global Politics Course Companion, and that is really created by the, and endorsed by the International Baccalaureate Association. So, each summer, as we've talked about in the past, our high school teachers really attend training, not just with IB, but also with AP, and oftentimes, there's resources that are recommended to update as part of the course. So, that is our main recommendation as far as an additional resource at the high school level. Our main recommendation that we're sharing with you this evening is really a follow-up to our presentation to you in April, where Alyssa and I were sharing a little bit, not just about the curriculum review process, but also the resources that we've been piloting. And Alyssa has been instrumental in the K-5 piloting, as well as the teams that have been working throughout this process over the last two years. It was one of the first things she started, as she started a little over two years ago. So it really has been a comprehensive process, as we shared with you. We're now ready to be able to formally present to you our two programs, which are Functional Phonics and Morphology. And as we shared, that really is getting at one area of the braid, as Alyssa shared with you earlier, and the other is Arts and Letters, which is really, in terms of thinking about things such as comprehension and vocabulary, writing. And we know that both programs, from what we've experienced, not only in our pilot, but also what we've learned from other districts, those two programs have been very successful, and many districts are adopting those same two programs for the upcoming year. So, with that said, we also want to share that in the upcoming year, although I won't be here, there are many areas still continuing through review. So, as we look at the upcoming year, at the secondary level with English Language Arts, there will be additional pilot materials that the team will be bringing to you at the end of next year, as well as in the areas of Spanish immersion, Chinese immersion. We are, we have completed science, and then the final area is social studies. So those will be some areas in the upcoming year that we will be piloting several resources and coming before you over the next two years to really be able to move some new materials out that are aligned to new standards. So with that said, we'd like to present this to you this evening. We will have all the materials available all summer for community review, and we will also be coming back to you in August for final approval to everything.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions or comments for our presenters? Dan?
Just for the community review piece, for folks who might be interested in that, how do they go about doing that?
Okay, great question. So we will have the full digital access to both resources. So even though both resources can be accessed as far as a preview online publicly, we will have a computer, as well as login, so that community can come and actually spend as much time with the resources as they would like. And that will begin this week, so at any point.
Here at the reception desk.
At the, thank you, at the District Service Center reception desk. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item then.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, we have Review of Policy Number 526, Student Use of Cellular Phones. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, our first time we shared information about this was a year ago in the summer. As we were coming back to the school year, I wrote a letter to the community talking about the fact we'd be reviewing our cellphone use in our schools and laid out our current practice, which was at the elementary school, we recommended parents don't send any smartphones or technology. At the middle school, students can bring it, but they shouldn't be out from bell to bell. And at the high school level, we recommend that students can have it at school and in passing time, and that they're not used in class. And to support this, at the high school, Principal Erickson had a pretty robust series of communications throughout the year with expectations for parents about cellphones and supporting teachers. Towards the end of the year, we surveyed students, parents, and staff on those rules, and we actually, a month ago, brought that data to the board, disaggregated by level. There was overwhelming support by students, parents, and staff with our current elementary policy. There was general support for our current policy from our middle school. Some of you heard from our middle school students, it's a little awkward to ask for permission to use the cellphone during the day from staff, but students generally report that kids are following it, and it's a non-issue. At the high school level, much different review. Seventy-five percent almost of students support our current practice. Parents have a slight majority in support of our current practice, and staff have a slight majority opposed to our current practice. So, in front of you is our policy for the cellphone, and I'm going to reference for the public the line that we are recommending that we continue with, that says, "Cellphones and other personal electronic devices shall remain silent and kept out of sight during instructional time unless specifically allowed by teachers or other school staff." That is the language that we have. At the last study session, we recommended that we have work to do at our high school because that is the area where staff feel the most disrupted by it, and yet we have all the tools in place for staff. Some staff feel like it's a non-issue in class, other staff feel like it's a tremendous burden to monitor that. We do have a department, I believe it's our math department, that's going to be piloting a type of pouch that students put in before they go to class to see if that is an advantage. So we're trying some different things to support our high school staff, but it's our recommendation that we would continue with this policy as it's written and continue to study how to better support our high school staff. With that, I'd open it up for board discussion. We're not for approval tonight, this will come back in August for final approval.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Law. Members, comments or questions? I bet there will be some. Chris?
Maybe more just a comment. So as I'm looking at the packet, and I specifically looked at this one, and I don't really, it's more of a comment, you know, my thinking was, we have a cellphone policy that was last updated 10 years ago, and we're bringing it back to the board, and we're not having any updates to it. And so, and I'm not advocating that we do, but I'm really glad that you went through kind of all the things that we have gone through, the surveys and all of those things that we'll continue to look at, because I think the policy is good. It's, I think, vague enough that it applies and allows us to do all these things, but we know that we have more work to do with this. And so, more for the public and people listening, because I think people are going to see this and go, "Really? You're not touching a policy?" And, I mean, cellphones have changed everything in the last 10 years. And so I just think, you know, we need to be ready for that, and we are doing that work, and I'm very supportive of it, so I just, it's just my thoughts.
Megan.
So, when I read through it, I'm generally in favor of what we have. I think, you know, data showed that what we have is working. I do think that there are still outstanding questions about wearables, you know, like the watch situation. There are so many questions about it that I don't think we've really addressed well. I think most of our data is around phones, and I actually hear more about inconsistencies with watches than I do with phones. And so I just am not sure how we address that. It sounds like, you know, like when you read that, "Cellphones and other personal electronic devices shall remain silent and be kept out of sight," but then if they're wearing a watch and it's in sight, then some teachers enforce it and some teachers don't. Or at the middle school, it's different than at the elementary school. And so, I think we just need to be thoughtful about that piece of it, because I have heard, and I've experienced with my own kids, like there are wild discrepancies in what is allowed and what's not, and it's very teacher-dependent, and so I think that's leading to a lot of confusion among families. Because I had multiple, multiple families after the Groveland discussion around the anxious generation, I had multiple families asking what our policy was on watches, and it sounds like some elementary schools have been very clear in one direction, some haven't, and then within those schools, there's a lot of discrepancies. And so, just something for us to think about is, how do we holistically, when we have this policy around personal electronic devices? I think we've done a really good job with the phone component of it, but with other emerging technologies, how do we respond to that?
Dan?
I think Megan's point is really well-taken and sort of piggybacks on Chris's point. You know, this, this policy has been substantively working, but hasn't received a substantive update for the better part of a decade, and we've seen that technology's advanced in such a way that it might require closer examination in some areas. Personally, where I come down on this, I err on the side of being more restrictive of students having devices in class and everything like that, because when we had our forums and things, and we heard from students about what they liked to use their phones for, it was for things like communicating with their parents, or for music and things like that, when allowed by their teachers. But we're a district where students have one-to-one iPads, and they can communicate with their families that way. My children do sometimes. They can listen to music on their iPads. And particularly concerning for me, just because I've been through this, is 3B here, respect for privacy rights. I mean, that, that entire bullet list has been violated, like, on the part of one of my kids. You know, there have been people recording in the bathrooms and sharing those recordings around the school. It's been a very, very serious situation, and that can, that can escalate from innocent to something that's potentially criminal and very serious very, very quickly. So, I understand all the reasons why parents like to have their phones in the hands of their children. I mean, I have the same concerns and the same fears that every parent does, but I think erring on the side of keeping phones and things locked away during the day, before the bell and after the bell, is, is the better policy for our kids. And I know it requires increased work and enforcement on the part of the teachers, and it requires like a cultural shift to get there, which isn't necessarily easy, but I, I just think there's just too much risk for harm versus the benefit that kids have having access to their phone throughout the day.
Anyone else? I mean, I think those are all great points. I read the policy, having in mind our discussions, and we've been talking about this over the past year or more, honestly, it's come up in most of our student listening sessions at the various buildings. We've discussed it with, and we've discussed it with our cohort groups that we're now working with this year. And I do think the information and feedback we've gotten from the community in those sessions is consistent with what Superintendent Law presented earlier in terms of sort of broad support for the treatment at the, at the elementary school, and a slightly, slightly different picture, but essential support for the way we treat the devices in middle school and at the high school. I share Dan's thoughts about, you know, as, as a parent who went through this, maybe at the time this was, when it was Newark, starting, starting to deal with it when our kids were going to middle school, it becomes more of a challenge to just keep track of your kids because of the active rich lives all these kids lead at sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and keeping track of them, keeping track of each other, and, you know, just logistics. It becomes sort of a fact of life that we are all used to, but that doesn't mean that it's the right educational framework. And so, I was struck reading the policy that it, it doesn't really talk about the different approaches at the different levels, and I wonder if that is a, if that's a change that should be in a policy like this, or if it's something we simply need to communicate differently to our community as reminders. And I agree, I think that, I also want to be supportive of teachers, thinking about the high school level where there would be the most probably enforcement need. It's interesting to me that the teachers were the strongest opponents of the current policy, if I'm understanding that data, so that they would be the ones who most need to deal with it. But I don't know that any of that means we have to change our policy, but I do think we need to look at it. And I, I guess I agree that there's some updates we should consider making, like, because smartwatches were not a thing for my kids 10 years ago, and that, that has been changing rapidly, and all technology continues to sort of change rapidly and move further down the grade levels to the younger kids, the more we, the more we all get familiar with it.
Well, just, we are in, there's, we are in compliance with our current policy. We are enforcing in alignment with our current policy, so there is no need to formally approve this again in August, should we continue to study it. We, you know, of the things you've talked about, wearables and consistently enforcing wearables, we don't have consensus. We have consensus from parents that they want them to go to school. That's a very loud voice, we heard from parents. And then the question is, how should they be handled at school? We've also heard from parents, "Don't make my child lock up this device," because elementary kids lose things. So, our current practice is to try to have there not be a distraction. So, we are, we can continue to study this. There's nothing that says this should come back for review. The, we're piloting something, locking away in classes, that, just as a reminder, all of our students carry cellphones, none of them are required to by the school system. This is a parent decision to send these devices to school, so when you are choosing to not have students have those devices, you're taking on every single parent in the district who has sent one to school. So, I mean, that is, that's a board discussion to have. I'm certainly supportive of the board revisiting policy, but last year, when I sent a letter to the community, I said, "Keep in mind, we're not expecting you to send phones to school." If you do that, and that, then you're, you know, the question is, how do you expect your student to respond at school? So, based on this discussion, I, I think we'll not bring it back until we have, we can specifically look at, I'd recommend not going detailed level by level, because that might have to change on an annual basis, but the two things to look at are how we communicate and what we might attach to this as procedures that we could clearly share with parents, if that makes sense to you.
I just, I have one question. We're piloting at the high school level? Why did we decide...
At the classroom, at the classroom level, we're piloting.
I wonder about the middle school level, if that would be more appropriate, because just that level of sixth, seventh, eighth grade, kind of not really understanding the significance of, you know, recording and...
I think the problem, though, is that at the middle school, it's less of an issue already. Like, if you're in the classrooms in the middle schools, the teachers report that the kids don't really have their phones out during class. So locking up in a pouch like that in middle school wouldn't really give us much data, because it...
Is that why we chose high school instead for the pilot?
I would say so, because that's where it would be.
I think our high school teachers are the ones who see it the most.
Oh, the high school.
Our students reported that, you know, not to be critical of anyone in our building, they report that the more rigorous engagement in the class, the less cellphones they see. At the general level courses that are more lecture-based, students are more likely to pull out a cellphone. So it's a, it is, based on the students that you visited with and I visited with, it is a high school issue, more than middle school. Our middle school students reported that it's awkward to ask for permission to use the phone, so...
And I, but, and I would just, I would just counter and say, like, to Kemery's point, like, when we're talking about respect for privacy rights and things like that, that's, that's... about respect for privacy rights and things like that, that's likely not happening in the classroom. That's happening in public, in passing time, and in other parts of the building. So that won't be solved by a classroom-by-classroom lock-it-away approach. It would have to be some sort of like all-day approach and stringent enforcement.
I would also chime in that that is one of the reasons that a lot of people went to watches, when we've been talking about it, is because you can't take pictures or record or anything like that. And so I do think we are getting into the realm of, like, just technology has changed so much, and people have tried to, like, adapt and make decisions accordingly. And so I think we just need to be thoughtful about that stuff, because I think that is a big problem. Like, I'm appalled to even hear that that was going on, that people were recording in the bathroom. It's just horrifying to me. But a lot of parents kind of went that smartwatch route, that I know personally, just because they had some locus of control around the image sharing and taking of photos and stuff. So just another piece to throw out there.
Based on this discussion, we won't bring this back for an immediate approval, but we will study two things. One, we'll be able to monitor the high school pouches and see if that makes a difference. Two, we'll really focus on communication at the elementary level with wearables and communication and expectations.
And I think at middle school, too. Like, I think that is still very common at the middle schools, that the kids have watches of some sort and not a phone. So I think it probably extends through both of those levels.
Any other thoughts? Good discussion. I think it needs to be continued to be looked at. And I also think, just as a reminder, we did hear a lot from our surveys and from our community. So there's, as the superintendent says, you know, if we decide to clamp down, we will be, we'll probably get a reaction. And maybe that's the right reaction. Just to keep that in mind. All right. Next item on our agenda is review of possible property purchase. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have heard a recommendation from our Facility Task Force that met most of the year, and actually later tonight, you're going to be making a recommendation on that action. But one of the things that was not a formal recommendation, but a long-term consideration is, whenever possible, the district should consider purchasing land near our sites for the purpose of future expansion or addressing future needs. Lately, that has been most prevalent near Minnetoka High School. I'd remind the board and members of the public that building and land funds are different than classroom funds. As everyone's aware in the room, we can't ask for a tax increase to support hiring more teachers, but we can use existing funding streams to enhance our buildings or purchase land. So tonight, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Burchois, will be giving a summary of a proposed parcel of land that the board could consider for purchase aligned to that Facility Task Force recommendation. Mr. Burchois?
Well, I am waiting on technology. I'll try again. Oh, there we go. Second time's a charm. So we, there's a parcel that's for sale adjacent to Minnetoka High School. And we currently own this parcel and this section here. A number of years ago, about 10, 11 years ago, we actually bought the, this parcel actually went down to this point and came across like this, and this parcel came out all the way to that. We bought this whole parcel, but we bought the back portion of this parcel from Mr. Fricki to be able to take our bus driver, which used to be navigated through that way. We pushed the bus driveway out and then converted the bus driveway into more parking. So we own this parcel and this parcel. This parcel is for sale. It's 0.7 acres. Between the two parcels that we currently own, we'd be getting close to, pretty close to two acres of contiguous land adjacent to our school site. There's not too many of these around our school site that you really can have an opportunity to do something with. Maybe in the future, you know, acquiring one more parcel there might be valuable. But even with this parcel, you would have options in the future, or future school boards would. So what I did is, I used a block of space as a pro forma footprint. So I used the West gym in the black box, because it's a block of space that, quite frankly, I could very easily cut out and tape onto another copy. So CPA means cut, paste, and attach, right? Anyway, so with, with, okay, I'm missing a page. Well, with this parcel right here, or this footprint would actually fit on this parcel in this area. And that's approximately 37,000 square feet, which is the same square footage as we have in the Vantage Momentum Building, except on three floors. So it would be valuable to be able to put, to put this, or to acquire this parcel for future use. It doesn't have to be for a gymnasium. Again, I just grabbed a footprint to utilize that and put it on the site. So it's worth considering in that regard. The purchase price is $430,000. We need to, or we have put down a $5,000 contingency fee on it, earnest money. So if, and have made an offer. If we don't go forward with purchasing, we will lose the earnest money. But it was, it definitely was worth making sure that we were able to, in essence, pull it off the market so that you could consider it. Because these type of situations don't come along very often.
Thank you, Mr. Burchois. Board members, comments, questions? I mean, I'll go first. My thought, or one thing to remind everyone in the community paying attention, is that we just went through a facilities study. We've done a lot to winnow down what we might do out of all of the needs that were identified by the schools and the community in doing that facility study, again, for major facilities upgrades that had not been done for many decades. And so there, I believe there are certainly some things that were left on the table there that the schools and the community would be interested if we had additional space and additional funds for them. This wouldn't be part of any other decisions about a bond offering for tonight. But it just seems like there's, one of our limitations is that we are in a very developed community. We don't, we can't spread outward like a large school in the excerpts. We are stuck with this footprint. And so whenever we have a chance to expand that footprint in a meaningful way, I think it's worth serious consideration, so. But there, I think you have time to shoot.
And you took out most of my thunder. I would just add that during my time on the board, it's just, it's been a common understanding and direction from the board that any chance that we have to acquire adjacent parcels to our schools, we should take serious consideration. And I haven't seen one yet that we haven't adjacent like this. It just, the opportunities don't come along enough very often, and, you know, we're so space-constrained, as you said, Patrick, very well. So I think this is something we have to have serious consideration. I'd be very supportive of it. Thank you. Mike?
Just because I'm not that familiar with zoning policies, is there an issue with school and residential zoning? Do we have to worry about whether or not we would be able to build on that property just because a zoning restriction would need to be approved by the city and possibly denied?
Residential zoning is, zone something called R1. And schools and churches are allowed in residential zoning, as a matter of course, across the state. Now, that doesn't mean that the city of Minnetoka won't have very detailed input into whatever we did, but a school is compatible with residential zoning.
Megan?
I would imagine we'll hear about water. And if we move forward to something, it seems like where there's always something around water and reservoirs and holding, whatever.
If we built on this site, we'd be able to put an underground stormwater tank underneath the east parking lot.
Well, there you go. Well, I'm not going to be here for this special meeting, so I just wanted to chime in that I echo exactly what Chris and Patrick have said, that I think, you know, we're in a situation where we are so landlocked that, I think that's a matter, of course, that, you know, if we already own the adjacent property, I don't know why we wouldn't want to make that a bigger space. So I'm in support of it also.
Thank you.
Just one other consideration for the public. Having been through this a few times, it's always taxpayer-friendly to purchase land when it's open for sale versus when we need it and have to ask to sell it, because fair market value goes up considerably when the government tries to negotiate with a person. So when this person put it on the market, one, it makes our existing property more valuable because we can do something with it, and two, it'll probably be a better deal than it'll be if some future board needs to deal with acquiring land for the purpose of an expansion, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right. That's it for our study session. We'll move to our special meeting. We adjourned.
Good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2025 Special Meeting of the Minnetoka School Board, which I will now call to order. Let's stand and say the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Uh, Dan, may I have a second?
Second.
Mike, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the first item on this, uh, agenda is the approval of resolution calling November 4th building bond referendum election. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, way back in November of 2023, that board charged the district with creating a community advisory board, a facilities task force to study all of our current facilities and make recommendations for improvement along with costing. In November of 2024, that task force recommended to the board a lengthy list of potential improvements that the board and committee have worked with back and forth to the point where, um, there's a viable ask that this board was comfortable with depending on tax impact. Tonight, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Paul Bourgeois, is going to summarize that process, the final ask, the potential tax impact, and then bring it to your decision whether or not you want to put this on the November 4th election for community consideration. Mr. Bourgeois.
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We, um, have done a lot of work on this over the past, uh, two years and I will breeze through some of the detailed items that you've actually seen over the last several years, but it's an opportunity to just, uh, let the public, uh, see where we're at in, in kind of a preview of where we're going. Uh, so, uh, as Superintendent Law mentioned, we had the creation of a facility study task force. And, uh, it was, uh, it was a goal at that time. So the board authorized the creation of it in February of 2024 and we put together a cross-section of the community. Uh, elementary, middle, school and high school families, empty nesters, teachers, paraprofessionals, districts and, you know, employees, open and roll families. And we had a, a charge of assessing each district facility as to its ability to support current and future instructional need and develop recommendations for potential future actions for, uh, consideration by the school board. Uh, I'm not going to read the name, but the, the names are out there and so these are in the public record. And you can see, uh, who they are if you want to get on our website. Uh, we actually met 15 times and went to all of the school sites, uh, had presentations, walkthroughs. Uh, the, the community group did a great job, uh, studying, putting a lot of time and effort into it to, and were very thoughtful with their recommendations. So, um, we had some, we had some, uh, recommendations from the community task force. And, uh, what, uh, this, what was presented was a, a number of, of possibilities. And then the school board, as Superintendent Law indicated, kind of synthesized that down to $85 million in, in facility improvements under consideration. And then you, as the school board, authorized us to do a review in common to the Department of Education and Mark just to see, um, uh, and to, to see if his, how they were thinking about what we would possibly be proposing and then also what, um, to be able to, to have a placeholder, uh, available in case you decide you were going to run them, a referendum, uh, for a building bond. So we received a positive review in common from the Department of Education in April. They turned it around in 27 days and that, that doesn't, that sounds like a long time to some people, but typically anywhere from 60 days to 90 days, um, is, is the more normal turnaround time. So, uh, we, they, they thought very positively of what the proposals were. Uh, if we would do a building bond referendum, it would be the first building bond referendum run by our school district since April 23rd of 1996. So 29 years and seven months. All the various building projects that we've done in the ensuing almost three decades, uh, we've done utilizing existing district revenue streams, uh, and, and trying to stay within, uh, existing resources so that we did not ask taxpayers for additional facilities dollars. What we have done over those decades is gone to ask for operational funds for, uh, operating referendum dollars and capital projects, technology referendum dollars, but no building bonds, uh, which is actually, uh, three decades is, is quite a while. Uh, this is just a, a ranked prioritization list from the community, uh, from the facilities task force. The $85 million are the items in green. I won't read through them all and I'm not going to go through all of them in detail. We've gone through them in detail. But, uh, we'll have chances to talk to the community if you approve moving ahead with a building bond referendum about all these as we move ahead. But $85 million covered approximately two-thirds of the overall recommendations from the facilities task force. I'm going to zip through various, um, pictures of, just doing a teaser of, of, um, of, of buildings, but, uh, I'm just going to talk about the, the whole initial bond and construction plan. Uh, $85 million worth of improvements. If we, what typical way to do it is to sell $85 million in one bond issue and immediately, uh, do that after a successful referendum. And that's a traditional bonding option. And we would basically look at trying to build the, the buildings as fast as we could for, um, in about two and a half years. We worked really hard to actually make that be hopefully reasonable in terms of an ask. But, and we got that down to $4.99 per month on a $500,000 median home price. So that was reasonable, but we thought that we could do better. So, um, one of the things that, that we always look at is, um, and we want to be considerate of is in Minnetoka, we have, uh, basically about 90% of the tax base is either 71% is homestead or, and then another, uh, another 18 to 19% is basically, uh, non-resident or residential non-homestead. So those are people who own property here, but, and they may have, may used to have been residents, but maybe now they're snowbirds and their primary residence is in another state, but they still are here for a long part of the year. And that would have had about a 2.64% levy impact in year one and it would decline over time. So, um, you know, not, not very big, but we thought that we could do better. Uh, you know, that's the tax impact that it would have had a $4.99 per the median home price and $8.41 for the average home price. So, but with continuing economic uncertainties that we've seen, um, we actually thought, let, let's, let's keep working at it. Let's try to get better at it. So, uh, we did some outside the box thinking. Uh, we've done outside the box thinking to mitigate tax impact over all the last couple of decades with all the bonding for construction that we've done, staying within about a four and a half million dollar annual existing revenue stream. So we weren't taxing more to, to make improvements to the district during those last, these last couple of decades. So we've been able to do 370,000 square feet that way. So we can apply those same strategies to an $85 million building bomber, bond referendum by, uh, timing the projects a little differently and timing the bond issuances differently. So if we spread out the design and spread out the construction, uh, it can mitigate the tax impact even more. So we actually came up with a solution that would literally have no net tax impact. And what I mean by that is we'd be levying, we're levying a certain amount for general obligation bonds. And as some of those bonds are retired, the bonds from a successful bond referendum would come online so that the net dollar amount would not change. I kind of use the metaphor of a, a family that has two cars and maybe they're paying off one car with a $400 a month car payment. And, uh, they want to pay that car off and when they do pay that car off, it'll be time to replace the other one. So they can, they pay the car off, they get a second car, they replace the second car and they have a $400 payment. So their payment stays steady and they're not dipping into the grocery money or any, or, or the utility money or their home payment money. So you keep, you keep it level and that's the idea behind this. So there's no net tax impact on their budget with their cars. The idea would be that there would be no net tax impact because we try to have the dollars come online while other payments are coming offline. So we look at issuing $5 million, uh, in February of 2026 to fund some projects at MME and MNW. They're the largest recommendations that came out of the committee. Uh, and then we would, uh, start construction on those in June of 26 and complete them in September of 27. Following that, we would do a $3 million bond issue to design and construct the other projects, which are the elementary schools and then the high school. Uh, some, some, there are some smaller projects, $27 million in total. And, uh, we would start construction on those in 2028 and complete them no later than August of 29. But they would be finished probably sooner than that because they're not quite as large a projects. But at the same time, uh, we would, so by doing that, uh, it allows us to break apart the bonding into four tranches. So the thing is, is there would be a net incremental tax dollar amount on the new bonds at $2.62, but this would be offset by declining payments. So you can never tell anybody, hey, we're doing more bonds and you're not paying for them. Yes, we're asking people to continue, we would be asking people to continue to pay the same amount, not more on our general obligation bonds. So, uh, the net tax impact would be zero, uh, across the board. And, uh, so again, just reiterating, uh, paying the same amount instead of paying an increased amount. So this is what the bonding would look like where we would be able to layer it in outside the tan is existing bonds. And then the four bond tranches that I've talked about are different colors on here would be layered in a little bit at a time and then a little bit more later as we paid off more bonds so that we would be able to pay off these over about 25 years and, um, uh, but still it would just be flat. And this assumes also that there's no additional, uh, new properties being built, uh, new houses being built. And there's a lot of new home construction. We have a lot of large lots that are being subdivided into twos and threes. Uh, we, we have infills coming where there's vacant lots. And so generally our property values go up by one to one and a half percent a year. So this is actually done based on the idea that, um, we're, we're not even counting on that. But as more properties would be constructed dur, in, in the district, everybody's share actually even goes down. So a taxpayer would see that portion of their, of the, of, of their responsibility for paying off these bonds at a lower amount. So this is, uh, a chart. It's hard to read, but basically it says the net tax impact, it's the net tax impact. And this was computed for us with the help of Baird, uh, financial advisors. Their name's on it. It's, so it's, it's, and it's not something we made up. It's the real deal. And, uh, we would be able to have no net tax increase across the board for all property classifications in the district if we would implement that bonding strategy and that construction strategy. So, uh, that is, that would end up being in essence the ask that we would be doing if you would approve going for a building bond referendum.
Looking for approval. So we'll start with a motion, uh, to, uh, adopt the recommended resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Chris. Uh, any discussion? Chris.
More just, uh, comments. Um, I've, and, uh, I think th, this entire board has been, uh, really supportive of the facilities task force and all of the work. I've specifically been, um, a long time wanting us to, to look at the middle schools and really look at, at, at our investment in that. We've had a lot of discussions around that and so. But just want to, a, a couple of thank yous of, from that standpoint, uh, Paul Bourgeois, Kerry Lindberg for, uh, facilitating and, uh, the, the, the facilities task force, the 27 members. And, uh, for us to, we've gone through this a bunch of times and for us to break it down that, uh, we hit all of the highest, uh, needs that are identified with that. Uh, Paul, you said two-thirds. I, it's probably more than that, uh, uh, from that, that standpoint of it. And, you know, you and your team and your wizardry to, to, uh, get all of that done. $85 million of investment back into our district to hit all of these highest needs things at, with no net, uh, taxing increases is just amazing. And a great use of taxpayer dollars and, and being mindful of that when we're having all of the, the budget and, uh, you know, I, our, a lot of families across our, our district are, are, are feeling it. So I think it's, it's great. I'm very supportive of this. And, uh, you know, thank you to everyone that, that's involved.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Mike?
Uh, just to clarify for the sake of the public, um, the, the ballot, as they will, as it will appear in November or will, if, if we vote for this, um, will have the comment on the bottom of it in bold printing. By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Uh, and it appears very clearly by this that, that there will not be a property tax increase per se. Practically speaking, what it will be is there won't be a decrease in taxes because those, those previous bonding resolutions are falling off.
Yes, yes. And, and we'll have to communicate that very clearly to everybody. So, because yeah, if you issued new bonds, there's, there's payments that go with it. But we're trying to design it so that, um, that as those payments come on, other payments are dropping off so that, that you don't see the net. You don't see an increase. Uh, you, you just continue to pay at the same level.
Yeah. And so in essence, it's the, basically the same messaging that we had when we did the tech levy, which was, we're not increasing your taxes. We're just keeping it the same because we're just extending the, the previous commitment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I, I like to look at this as we're living within our means. And certainly in the economic climate we're in, we all think about that in our own families, I imagine. I know I do, that, you know, where things are uncertain. Uh, I think the, uh, the work you did, the work that the, uh, financial advisory committee did to, uh, help push us toward finding other solutions was, was, uh, very appropriate given that climate. And so I, I really appreciate that. And I, and I want to again, uh, second the comments about the facilities task force for, if there are people paying attention to this meeting who weren't paying attention previously. Uh, it's a, uh, been said a few times, 27 members, a great cross-section of our Minnetoka schools community. And they really dug in, did the work, uh, and identified areas of greatest need. Uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, this conversation. Hopefully it passes and we get to do the, the project. But I think it's, uh, great work. It's overdue and, uh, the price is right. So I'm strongly in favor. Dan?
Uh, I'm kind of just echoing what, what everybody else said. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very thankful. I think this was really, really thoughtfully done and really, really responsive to the feedback that we received from all sorts of stakeholders. I know my Minnetoka city taxes are going up and I know my Hennepin County taxes are going up. But because this was so thoughtfully done and went through such a deliberate process, we can make improvements to all of our schools in the district without our school district increasing the tax burden on our families. And I think that's a really important thing to continue to make investments that way, but also be cognizant of our families' budgets. And, you know, just tonight, we heard a couple of parents concerned about class sizes and space in Minnewashta. And we can't solve that immediately, but we can take really practical, uh, measures like this when we have the opportunity to bring more space into those buildings so that we can live in them and grow into them the way we want to for our families and our kids.
Any other comments, discussion? All right. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of sale of 2025A general obligation equipment notes. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the next seven items are approvals related to sales of bonds, bids or purchase. I'm going to let Mr. Bourgeois walk these through one at a time rather than introducing all of them separately. But we'll start with the first one, which is the sale of bonds for the tech infrastructure rebuild. Mr. Bourgeois.
May I just interrupt before you do that and just note for the board members that we do have carrying items on some of these items that we have now done, including seven, eight, nine and 11 on your agendas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Uh, these, uh, are $2.2 million in 2025A general obligation capital equipment notes, uh, that are being paid for out of the, the capital projects fund. Uh, the bonds were issued to basically begin or to begin and complete a, a rebuild of the infrastructure of the district. So, uh, we are, uh, actually increasing the capacity of the district. Uh, so many, so many things we're doing now, of course, with everybody on iPads and video and all the other things is we need to increase the bandwidth, widen the freeway, so to speak. So we're actually, um, doing, uh, these bonds are going to be paying for, uh, about 60, about 57 miles of cable, nine miles of fiber and approximately 1,000 different data access points. Uh, and we're going from one gigabit speeds up to 10 gigabit speeds. So hopefully it'll provide capacity into the future. Uh, you authorize us to sell $2.2 million worth of bonds to pay for that. Uh, and we sold them on June 3rd, uh, at a total interest cost of $3.43. We'd like you to approve the ratifying resolution so that we can close on the bonds.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2025A sale resolution as prepared by Dorsey and Whitme?
So moved.
Dan, may I have a second?
Second.
Mike, any discussion? We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Bourgeois.
Get my paperwork in order here. Um, thank you, uh, Super, um, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Uh, the next item is the approval of a sale of 2025B certificates of participation for construction of parking at 18407 Dalton Avenue. Uh, we, uh, this, these bonds will pay for, they pay for the purchase, they pay for, uh, the demolition of the existing home site. They pay for the underground stormwater tank. There has to be a retaining wall built and, uh, then a parking lot built on top of it. So, uh, uh, So 1,950,000 par value bonds were sold on June 3rd, and they were sold at a total interest cost of 5.07%. A little higher than we were hoping, but interest rates moved up a little bit at that time. But we still were very competitive in the market, and so we're recommending that you please ratify this sale.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2025B sale resolution as prepared by Dorsey and Whitman?
So moved.
Cameri, may I have a second?
Second.
Chris, any discussion? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bourgeois?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Members of the Board. This next item is to approve sale of 2025B certificates of participation for replacement of the Veterans Field retaining wall. And because of the esoteric nature of the rules regarding public and municipal debt, we had to not sell these on the same date as we sold the other two. We had to split them up in time. So the approval of the, or the bonds were sold, $1,300,000 par value were sold at a total interest cost on a 5.12%. They were sold on Monday, June 23rd, hence the reason to have to carry them in. But we would ask that you approve this so that we can commence with moving ahead with that project.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. I may have a motion to approve the 2025C sale resolution as prepared by Dorsey and Whitman?
So move.
Chris, may I have a second?
Second.
Mike, any discussion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bourgeois?
Agenda item eight is approval of a bid for Aviation One modifications to the Physical Health Center. The Aviation One program has been housed in the east half of the loft, like I say, the national award-winning loft section at Minnetonka High School for the past two years. But the growth of the program has made it prudent to relocate it to some space that is a little bit more lightly utilized. So what we are looking at doing here is moving the Aviation One program to the Physical Health Center. It's possible to divide that up and still have enough space for the Physical Health Center on one side of the space to still house the largest FIAD classes that they have. They have, they have had 60 machines in there. They'll still have space for about 39. So that's larger than the largest FIAD classes. And with the space that we're in, it's like free space that we're capturing. We're converting that into a 1,600 square foot space for Aviation One, and they're Level One simulators. And this is, will also then free up the loft then to be used for other classes that they would like to put up there and are looking for space to do. So it's relatively, it's relatively low cost for a high impact because they're basically, you know, gaining that education space that has, has been relatively lightly used. So we have it out for, we put out for bid on, bids are open on Tuesday, June 24th, and the low bid was CM Construction at 191,450. If this is approved, we will look at working on this almost immediately, as soon as we get our permits from the city. And the goal is to have it done by Thanksgiving, but we think we can beat that. And Principal Erickson says he can work around that as long as he knows it's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Would a member like to make the recommended motion approving the low bid of CM Construction Inc. in the amount of $191,450 for modifications to the Physical Health Center?
So moved.
Dan, may I have a second?
Second.
Cameri, any discussion? All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bourgeois?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent Law and Members of the Board. This next item is approval of the bid, which we actually opened this afternoon for replacement of the Veterans Field retaining wall. And then this will also then include the construction of a, in essence, essentially a donated, because they're providing all the dollars for it, concessioned and restroom facility on top of the space that in essence is going to be created with the replacement of the retaining wall. So we had, have basically about $2.3 million of available funds with the 2025C bonds that you authorized, and the Diamond Club is donating a million dollars to construct the concession restrooms facility. So the low bid, actually, we had a really good appetite for this. We had 10 bidders, and so a lot of interest in this project. Parkus Construction Company was the low bidder at $2,231,100. So we are within our available resources, and we'd ask that you approve this so that we can start moving ahead. Just as of a note, we still have to get through the city in terms of their planning commission and city council, planning commission on June 10th, and city council on, I'm sorry, July 10th, and then city council on July 28th. And, you know, then we'll be able to get our permit. But by, so the resolution actually approves the low bid contingent upon us getting our permit from the city of Minnetonka. So if for some reason they said, oh, no, we don't want you to do that, this would be, it would be null and void. So we hedge our bets in that regard, knock on wood, that the city of Minnetonka will look favorably upon having restrooms for people at Veterans Field. Anyway, so thank you for considering this little bit.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the low bid of Parkus Construction Company in the amount of $2,231,100 for replacement of the retaining wall at Veterans Field, et cetera?
So move.
Chris, may I have a second?
Second.
Mike, any discussion? Chris?
Just a quick comment, and again, to thank the partnership with Minnetonka Diamond Club for their generous donation that allows us to really tonka up this, this project and provide another high-quality facility for our athletic teams to use. So thank you to them.
Well said. Without any further comments, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. And this brings us to item 10. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, as we discussed just earlier tonight at the study session, one of the recommendations from the Facility Task Force was, whenever possible, should adjacent property to the district become available, the district should recommend to the school board that we purchase that property for future use. One such property has become available at 5264 Michelle Lane. This is convenient because we own the lot next to it, and it makes our own lot more usable for the future. There are no current plans to use this property, but this does leave open the option for future boards to use this space. So tonight, Mr. Bourgeois is going to talk through that sale and recommend purchase. Mr. Bourgeois?
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair, and Members of the Board. The district purchased approximately 12 years ago 5258 Michelle Lane, which enabled that plus purchase of a partial back piece of 5252 Michelle Lane for us to relocate our bus driveway and kind of push it out a little bit, and then convert the existing bus driveway into additional parking, which was badly needed at the time. So we've held 5258 Michelle Lane at that, since that point in time. I'm sorry, 52, yeah, 5258, pardon me, get my numbers tied here. But 5264 came available, and it is a parcel that if combined with our existing parcel would give us a chunk of land, about 2.6 acres, which actually is more footprint than we actually had available to put the Vantage Momentum Building on next door. The building is big, the site would be big enough to have a building with a footprint of up to 37,000 square feet on it on one floor. Just for comparison, the Vantage Momentum Building is 37,000 square feet on three floors. So depending on what a future board might need, whether it's science rooms or music rooms, or more classrooms, or more experiential learning, it has the ability to house a significant, you know, amount of learning space while still having sufficient setbacks for the neighbors, the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood. So it came on the market, it's $430,000. We have an offer in on it, and if you approve this, we will close on it and take that into the district inventory. And we will, we will probably be in the spring by the time everything would get done. It's starting to get, it's kind of odd, but it's the end of June, but it's late in the construction season already. And so probably in spring and summer of next year, we'll look at modifying the, you know, taking down the existing building and just kind of flattening it out and preparing for, you know, future use at some point in time. But for the moment and for the foreseeable future, there's not a specific item available to it. But it's a matter of, once in every 30 or 40 years, a parcel becomes available adjacent to this high school, it's prudent to be able to acquire land on our tightly landlocked school, high school site.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of 5264 Michael Lane?
So moved.
Cameri, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion?
When would the close date be? I didn't hear that.
July 9th.
July 9th, thank you.
Dan?
I think this is a prudent investment of our funds, just another forward-looking step we're taking. We don't know how we're going to use this property, but we know that when property is limited, it's advantageous to acquire it so we can, you know, think ahead and provide for the future of the district.
I'll just add, for the benefit of anyone who didn't follow the study session that was streamed a few minutes earlier, that we had a discussion of some more of those details, and there's general consensus of the board. Board Member Salinger, who couldn't stay for the special meeting, I think you can check the playback if you want to know what she said, but she, I think it's fair to say it was generally favorable as well. And I do agree that it's a timely and good investment that does not in any way degrade, take away from operating funds. As we've said many times, we're spending, we have different buckets that we're allowed to spend on different things, and we can spend capital improvement or similar money for this purpose, and I strongly recommend it. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, by June 30th of the school year, every school district in the state is required to submit and have a board-approved adopted budget for the upcoming year. You have seen a preview of this budget. We had hopes with the legislative session that we'd get some bit of good news that would tip in our favor for the out years, and unfortunately, we didn't, haven't seen that yet. There are future legislative sessions to keep working on. But tonight, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Bourgeois, is going to run through the different budgets in our system and recommend board adoption. Mr. Bourgeois?
Thank you, Superintendent Law. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I'm going to go through the general fund. We've gone through in very deep detail all the funds at the study sessions. So typically, at this adoption, we'd look at the general fund for any final changes, and there were really too many this year. And then recommend approval of the budget so that we can get about, continuing on the business of the district. I started with this slide. It's the 10th year that we've had additional operating funds from the November 3rd, 2015 election. The disappointing thing about this, these have been, our additional operating funds have been so important to us over the years. We've had three different tiers of about $4 million each over the last couple of decades that we are still able to get because the authority continues. But under current statutes, we don't have any further capacity to increase the operating referendum, other than receiving the annual inflation increases that the school board or that the voters had approved for our operating referendums. And there'll be a little more, that ties into a couple of other notes a little bit later in about another six or seven slides back. Just as kind of an overall, overall strategic look at things, we had the district going through some tougher times from the middle of the 90s after some funding changes in the state of Minnesota to the middle of the 2000s. Then we were able to look at, we had enrollment growth, we passed some operating referendums, we had an 18-year run of no budget reductions, which is really unheard, is very unique, unheard of probably most places, certainly in the state of Minnesota. The last two years, we've actually had to do budget reductions as we've topped out on enrollment and as we topped out on operating referendum capacity. In spite of our entreaties to the, to our legislators, we have not been able to get them to help us out. They have not taken the step to help us out to try to get additional operating referendum capacity so that at least we could even ask our voters. So we soldier on, and but as part of that, then, we are now like most other districts in the state with almost annual budget reductions to keep balancing our budget. So we, but we reduce about 3.7 million out of our general operating fund for fiscal year '25, and now we're looking at about 4.3 million out of the general operating fund for fiscal year '26. The other important point about that, as I mentioned, general operating fund, because one thing that's very unusual for the public is that compared to the private industry or an LLC, somebody owning a business where everything kind of goes down to one pot. For school districts, we actually have multiple pots of funds. The biggest one is our general operating fund for school operations and instruction. But then we have other pots of fund that are related to capital, which are a lot of the other items that we have. We have a separate fund to maintain our buildings, you know, so there's different separate funds. And so when we're talking about budget reductions, all of our other funds are basically, they're smaller, they're for a specific purpose, they're on a break-even basis, and they operate on a break-even basis. But the general operating fund is the one where we have the biggest challenges in terms of being able to have additional revenues coming in at a pace that equal the increase in expenditures each year. So this is just a bottom-line summary of how much we get per pupil. Each one of our K6 students are generating about $10,915 for fiscal year '26. Each one of our 7th through 12th graders are generating $13,098, just under $13,100. So the average is about $12,000 per student. 7th through 12th are weighted at a higher amount based on head count, simply because there's a lot more science in kind of resource-heavy type of classes that you start getting into, starting at the middle school level in grade 7 through 12. So our general operating fund budget for fiscal '26 is $1173,000, $116,521, which is a $4.657 million increase, or about 2.8%, which sounds a lot, like a lot. But it's catching up with expenditures because we're still deficit spending in this current year. So our expenditures are $172,432,000, which is just an increase of 1.6 million, about 0.9%. So because we've held things tight, and we had some additional revenues coming in, we're able to have a net surplus, revenue to expenses of $684,000. So we are, we are right there, you know, basically at break-even. So, but if you look at that, that's basically about, you know, about 0.4% surplus. So we are, we don't earn a profit, but if it was a profit margin, that'd be a real tiny profit margin. Our unassigned fund balance is projected to end at $18,387,416, which would be about 10.7% of our unassigned fund balance percent of expenditures. The school board has had a longstanding policy since the late 1980s, I believe it was 1987 when they developed a policy of maintaining at least a 6% unassigned fund balance. You know, 6% is basically, not even, it's about three weeks' worth of operations for a school district our size. I list out a number of the assumptions down there. One of the things is, we have our average teacher salary and benefits. It's a good profession, $134,321. Average new hire teacher salary and benefits, $107,533. And there's a teacher shortage. We need people to go into teaching. We need good teachers. So just a couple of pie charts. We have something called general education revenue, which is made up of something called the basic formula primarily, and that generates about $92.9 million of our 173 million in revenue. We have, then our operating referendum is 28.45 million. And there's something called local optional revenue, that's a $724 per pupil local levy, that's another $9 million. We get very little federal revenue. We get $3 million worth of federal revenue. In most other districts in the state, this yellow pie chart slice would be four, five, six, 10 times larger than what we get. Miscellaneous revenue covers all kinds of things, from bus fees to interest earnings on our cash, to donations, and about 5.6 million of that. In fact, we get about $1.5 million worth of donations every year, which is incredible. I mean, our community's great in that regard, just really, really giving. And then categorical programs are all these various state items, and actually, for a lot of districts, this categorical slice is actually a lot bigger, too. But for us, our categorical program, about 23 million of that, so basically, you know, about three-quarters of that is actually special education, which everybody gets based on the needs of the students in their, in their district. So on a percentage basis, the general education revenue is 54%. And operating referendum is a critical 16%. If you think, where would we be without that 16% of revenue? There'd be a lot of things that wouldn't be here. There'd be a lot of things that wouldn't be here. Local optional revenue, 5.2%. Actually, but it's all critical. When you're trying to balance down to a 0.4% surplus, every slice of this pie is critical. So federal revenue, 1.7%, miscellaneous, 3.2%, and then that categorical, including special, at a 19.7%. So from an expenditure standpoint, we are, in our general operating fund, we are still, even with all the technology and everything else we do, we are still a personnel-heavy operation. It takes a lot of people and a lot of interaction of people working with students to help them, help them do well. So the bulk of our salaries are in teachers and paraprofessionals, and then all of, which are the most student contact people, and then all other salaries and benefits are, the remainder is about $23 million, while teacher salaries and benefits are about $114 million, and paras are just under $13 million. We run a very efficient ship in the support areas, the purchase services, which actually includes natural gas, or I'm sorry, electricity, natural gases and supplies, but that covers everything from various consultants to electrical to anything, anything that we need, where we need somebody to come in and fix things once in a while, too, that's in there. Supplies is everything that we need in terms of paper supplies, cleaning supplies, you know, any classroom supplies that we spend out of the general fund. And then we also, natural gas is a supply, so it's the only utility that's there. And then transportation, we're at about $8 million, which sounds like a lot, but we spend on average about $300 less per pupil on transportation than the rest of the districts in the state. And then we have a small transfer of $757,000 that actually goes to the, that's to fund the operations of the art center. So on a percentage basis, teacher salaries and benefits are 66%. So two out of every $3 that we get, of all the revenue that we get from any source, goes into teacher salaries and benefits, and that's the way it should be because that's what we're here for. Paraprofessional salaries are about 7.5, so between those two, direct student contact, we're basically at about 74%. So almost $3 out of $4, out of every $4 is, goes into that direct student contact. And then other salaries and benefits, 13.6, and you can see the purchase services, 4.3, supplies, 3.4, and transportation, 4.6. So this is a slide that, there's a lot on here, I'm only going to hit a couple of items, but this takes our projection of our current year budget, which is on the left, and then we always show five years out, and because we don't have a lot of enrollment growth, because we don't have the opportunity for additional operating referendum dollars, we're really dependent on whatever largest the state is willing to give us. This year, we got 2.74% increase on our biggest, our basic formula, which is that general education revenue, but remember, that's only 54%. So, you know, 2.4% on 54% is really like 1.2% across the whole, the whole entity. So it's really important to remember that. So going forward, we're showing that, that we will have an annual deficit for the next five years, absent any additional revenue changes, that we'll have to continue to deal with. So we still have this challenge. At the bottom, I've added a set of slides showing what the dollar amount is based on our current projection that we would have to do. So, because it looks like a lot, because on top, it looks like a really big dollar amount on the far right side, but we're actually going to be spending about $912 million over the next five years for, we're going to be getting that much in revenue, so we've got to bring our expenditures in line with that $912 million over the next five years. But to do that, we're going to have to do budget reductions in the annual range of between, you know, approximately, it's a $2.5 million to $3.5, and then approximately $3 million for the next three years. So you do it a little bit at a time to be able to do that, but it still is to the point where it ends up, it ends up being difficult because the reductions are cumulative, so... But it's something that we just have to deal with, and it's out there. And in the meantime, we also got to continue, have to continue to just, maybe we'll break through one day with our legislators, and the ice will break, the dam will break, whatever you want to call it, and they'll let us get some operating referendum dollars. This is a really busy slide. It's the same numbers, but in more detail. It's just here to show, give people an idea what to do, but also then if they want to look at it online, they can kind of study the general, general part of how we operate in detail, a little more detail there. Our unassigned fund balance, you can see in the years when we were, when we were not having to reduce the budget, we built it up fairly steadily, then we got hit by COVID, and then we were spending down a little bit, but we were able to basically turn it around and have it start going back up again with that $18.4 million figure on the far right. And so these are just some revenue categories, same thing over again, but resident pupils bring in about $58.8 million on general education revenue. Open enroll brings with them about $34.1 million. Our open enroll students bring in enough revenue to cover all their incremental costs and still have enough money left over so that every resident student is able to have 30% more dollars spent on them for regular instruction than would have been if we didn't have open enroll students. So they are a huge asset to our district as participants, but also to our resident students, because the additional revenue that they bring in makes, makes it possible to have a lot of the things that we offer. You see special education at $23.4 million. There's something called a TRA pension adjustment revenue, about $1.8 million. That's related to, it's revenue coming in, but it's an identical expenditure going out. It's related to giving teachers an option for earlier retirement, and then our investment income is buried in that $5.6 million. So voter-approved referendum, 28.4, at $2,266 per pupil. It's growing $63.42 because it does go up with the rate of inflation, but other than that, it's at the state cap. The state cap does go up at the rate of inflation. And our local optional revenue. These next notes are actually kind of important because one of the things that I, that our district has had to do is, we get, well, we're kind of swimming without, we've always had to kind of do it on our own, for lack of a better term, because we get significantly less state aid than the average school district in the state. If you looked at just how much general fund revenue that we get in state aid, out of the 329 school districts in the state, with the district getting the most, being ranked number one at the top, and the district getting the least, being ranked number 329, we get, we're ranked at 320. So it's a, that just continues a decades-long streak in the bottom, you know, the bottom 5%. The average state aid on the most recent comparison dollars that we have available is $12,448. We get $10,254 in state aid. So we're, we're $2,194, or 18% less in state aid per pupil than just the state average. And the other thing about that is, so where does that put us? We're actually 197 positions below the state average. If the state average was a school district, it'd be number 123. We're 197 positions below that. The other thing is, is with our, you know, I have colleagues that go, you have your operating referendum, you're at the top, you have all this money. Even with that, thank God for our local populace and the operating referendum approval, but that brings us up to 167 out of 329. So we're still below the median. We're not even at the middle of the pack. So it's thanks to the operating referendum, but that still means that there's 166 school districts that receive more total revenue than Minnetonka, and we're 64 positions below the state average in total revenue. That's the latest school district data. That $2,194, it's, it's the first time we've been at that in our, in our audits every year. Clifton Larson Allen pulls comparative data for us as part of the audit summary that you get, and year after year after year, the amount of money we're spending in a year is less, in the current year, is less than most districts were spending a year, the year before, and by a significant amount, by $600, $700, $800, $1,000 less per pupil. The amount of state aid that we get, it used to be we were $1,200, $1,500, $1,600. The gap keeps growing. That $2,194 gap is the biggest it's ever been, and unless something changes, it's going to keep growing. We're going to keep falling farther and farther behind. So it's the latest information from the school district profiles, and it's just really important that everybody understands that because at some point in time, we need, we need to have this be addressed where, you know, we need to have, we need to be, at least be put into the middle of the pack if somehow. General operating fund expenditures, $150 million of salaries and benefits, which is 87.3%. Again, we are a people-intensive organization, and we have to be. Purchase services are 4.3%. You see a list of some of those there, utilities of $1.7 million. Property liability insurance, $865,000. The value of our buildings, if we had to build them new, is actually over $900 million. That's how costly new construction is. So they're insured at replacement value of approximately $900 million. Special education, some expenditures there for care and treatment. Supplies, again, instructional supplies are about $2.5 million. Testing is about $400,000. I always thought these are kind of interesting. Maintenance supplies, all the, all the cleaning supplies, they're good deals. Our purchasing department, our maintenance people do a great job, but only $171,000 for all the paid pair supplies and all the cleaning supplies to keep the buildings clean. And fuel for heat, natural gas, $557,000. Transportation, we've been running for a long time with 50 routes in the morning and afternoon, and 21 special education bus routes, but we get three trips in the morning and three trips in the afternoon. So that's all that we have in the general operating fund. So in the resolution that you have, which I have to find my board item here, the resolution that you have, I've talked about the general operating fund, but that's just one of our funds. The resolution that you have is to adopt the budget for all funds. So all funds put together, it's also in the backup packet, but if you include all of our funds, the total revenue and other sources is $278,821,199. And then the projected expenditures and other uses for all funds is $277,465,720. And we would be maintaining a balance of all governmental fund types at the end of fiscal year '26 of $66,676,179. The difference between that and the $18 million is such things as our self-insurance fund, our OPEB trust fund, our construction funds, our nutrition services fund, our community education fund, all of which contain, you know, fund balances that are restricted for them, and they can't be used to help out the general operating fund. But that's, that's the motion that you need to approve so that you're in essence approving the budgets across all the funds. I just went over the general operating fund tonight as kind of a capstone for all the other review we've done in the last couple of months.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Any, well, let's take a motion first. May I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented?
So moved.
Chris, may I have a second?
Second.
Dan, now, any discussion?
I want to thank you for all of your work. I feel like in some ways, we've been talking about this budget since about this time last year, and with all the work you've done on this and on the many ways we've tried to wring some more dollars out of the capital, so...
I also would be remiss if I didn't mention Ash Mooney, he's not here, but Ash Mooney, and actually Jess Hewlett, who's moving on to another job. We coached her up well, so we're going to miss her, but both of them have had a big, a big role in this also, and I want to thank them.
Yeah, kudos to your team. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Superintendent Law?
I have a consent.
Oh, consent, oh, forgot about that. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dan, may I have a second?
Second.
Cameri? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn? No?
So moved.
Chris? May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Aye.